Oh. Oh, that's so awesome. Nice.
No more.
We'll kind of work to zoom in different form up here anyway. Come on, baby. Lucky duck. Finally time you have a baby when you're in internship at most. For sure.
I think so right now.
Usually people are wondering, looking for a select.
Yeah, exactly.
Everyone's too cold to water.
That's what it is.
Here, of course.
No, we've never had this before ever.
But the things we've seen doing.
But I was like, oh, they got new chairs. Like, no, they're definitely not new chairs.
Well, that's what I, all of a sudden, I got up and I was like, hey.
Maybe they'll use it here because you can't see the phone.
I don't know, maybe they'll bring it back, who knows?
Yeah, nothing beats.
I hope we don't fight that fight.
Were you thinking for a change that they put their lives in the end?
No, I wasn't moving trust, because it's a war. It's working Pennsylvania, working up to Saudi again. I'm working in Brooklyn, which is first. Little town called. I mean, I keep skiing there, trying to ski nice.
You see you down there? Yeah. A little bit, just this side.
Yeah.
You would have definitely been in like.
You got seven?
In like a closet over there.
There's more people trying to squeeze out of there.
Yeah, too, right?
You gonna go?
See, it's literally come over.
Jerry, good?
It was the same thing.
A quorum being present, I call this special town meeting to order. The warrant has been properly executed. Welcome to special town meeting. As we begin, I'm pleased to welcome a group of Hanover scouts. Please stand and join them in the pledge of allegiance.
Scouts, attention. Scouts salute.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, scouts.
Thank you.
So let's begin the process of governing our town. On the way in, you should have picked up a copy of the warrant, which includes. We've started, please keep your conversations down. On the way in, you should have received your warrant, which includes all of the articles, proposed motions and commentary from the advisory committee and from the select board is in that as well. A few things on the layout upfront, we have representation of our two branches of town government. To my right, the select board, the executive branch, the five members are joined by Joe Colangelo, our town manager, Kevin DeFeely, our town council, and Ryan Costello, head of a high school intern to the town manager. To my left, the advisory committee, the legislative branch, which also includes all of us. Adcom studies every article in the warrant and makes recommendations. Their recommendations are important, but you have to decide yourself which way you want to vote on each question. With the nine-member advisory committee is our finance director, Jim Hoys, who keeps, who, uh, who is our finance director? To my, to my immediate right is town clerk Kathy Hader Bernier, who keeps the records and records all the proceedings, and I'm Doug Thompson, your town moderator, and I manage the meeting and the voting process. Exits are well marked down the bottom here and up top. Go out that way if it's an actual emergency because these exits enter into the school, as you know. Restrooms are in the common area where you entered. Please take a moment to make sure that your cell phone is on silent. Don't be that person. Accepting those who are in here for a town function, if we have any non-voters with us, there's a, they belong up and to the left. I see somebody up there with an orange, a couple of people with orange tags, that's great. As we go through the business here, if you'd like to speak, and I encourage you to do so, please come to a microphone or raise your hand if you can't get out there. Every time you speak, you start by stating your name and address, and this does apply every time you speak. If you have a question, please direct it to me. It's not a back-and-forth debate. I'll try to seek and find somebody who can answer it for you. If you aren't clear on a procedure, if something, this doesn't make sense, but you want to act in some manner, or you think you do, just come to the microphone and say what you're trying to do, and we'll figure it out. I never want to have someone's lack of procedure knowledge be the reason they don't speak. You're probably asking a question that five other people in the audience want to ask too. To state the obvious, I will not tolerate any personal attacks or improper language. I've said this many times in 21 years as moderator. Town meeting time grants me some pretty archaic authority to maintain order, but I've never had a reason to use it, so that's great. So if we're ready to begin, I'll start by recognizing Mr. Grund. If you could come to the microphone, sir.
Eric Grund, Seventy Heritage Way. I move to waive the reading of the articles.
Thank you, Mr. Grund, second. Mr. Grund has moved to waive the reading of the articles, and as exciting as it would be to read all of Article One before we process it, I think we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of moving the, of waiving the reading of the articles will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We will waive the reading of the articles, and we will begin. Article One, amend zoning bylaws, insert new section six point seventeen point zero, multifamily overlay district, MBTA zoning. Ms. Bragnoli.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Miriam Bragnoli, two-two-six Latchmont Lane, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board moves that town meeting adopt Article One as printed in the warrant. I thought I was getting feedback, is that better? Thank you. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's MGL, Chapter Forty A, Section Five of the Zoning Act, the Hanover Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, in person and by Zoom, in the second floor hearing room at Hanover Town Hall, five-five-zero Hanover Street, Hanover, Mass. zero-two-three-three-nine. In January of twenty twenty-one, our state legislature signed the MBTA Act into law. Although state agencies, city councils, planning boards, and zoning boards across the Commonwealth were becoming knowledgeable concerning the intricacies of the Act, for the public, it was somewhat of an outlier in that it wasn't in the forefront of media attention. Of course, that all changed with the town of Milton. We first brought this article to town meeting in May of twenty twenty-four and asked that it be referred back to the Planning Board for further study. As with other towns across the Commonwealth, we were waiting for the court to render a decision on the Milton case, and as we learned, the court's ruling was not favorable. Sorry. At town meeting in May of twenty twenty-five, we once again presented this article and asked that it be referred back to the Planning Board for further study, as we awaited the court's ruling on our state auditor's determination that the MBT Act constituted an unfunded mandate. The court denied the claim of an unfunded mandate, noting that the Act only mandates the creation of an overlay zone or zones. The Act does not say the construction will happen. Under the guidance issued by the Attorney General's Office, excuse me. Sorry. The Supreme Judicial Court has been steadfast in ruling that the MBTA Act is enforceable. If creating an MBTA Act compliant zone was optional, I doubt tonight's meeting would even be taking place. However, the MBTA Communities Act is not optional. It is a mandate requiring one hundred and seventy-seven communities to comply with the law. You know the old adage, you can't fight City Hall? Well, I think in this case that applies. Under the guidance issued by the Attorney General's Office, communities that are not in compliance by January first, twenty twenty-six, and as of today, we are not, those communities will face consequences, consequences which we believe will be detrimental to Hanover. First, the town will be in jeopardy of losing the ability to receive state grants. Second, the Attorney General has made it very clear that her office reserves the right to file suit against any community not in compliance with the Act. If this were to occur, the costs associated with the lawsuit would undermine any financial progress Hanover gained from the recent override. Third, there is a provision in the MBTA Community Act that references an entity called a special master. This is an independent, court-appointed individual who can impose zoning changes on a community if the community fails to comply with the law. The special master would scrutinize a town's compliance plan, and if found unsatisfactory, could draft a completely different zoning bylaw to achieve the requirements of the law. If that were to occur, we could lose control of the Hanover Common Site. For example, say the special master was not in favor of zoning only one site. Under the law, the five sites could be zoned. He or she would have the sole authority to create multiple sites throughout the town without any input from the community. A responsibility of the Planning Board is to protect Hanover's ability to guide its own growth, and we believe that supporting this bylaw is the most effective way to achieve that result. The proposed bylaw that is in front of you this evening is carefully crafted to concentrate multifamily zoning in an area that best fits Hanover's infrastructure and planning goals. It meets the state's requirement while minimizing disruption to established neighborhoods and by avoiding unnecessary impacts to the character of our town. Our support of this article is grounded in what we believe is in the long-term best interest of Hanover. Our support reflects a pragmatic and protective approach. Voting in favor of Article One ensures that Hanover, not the state, remains in control of where and how future development should occur. It safeguards our planning authority and positions the town in a manner that avoids the far more disruptive and severe consequences of non-compliance. On behalf of the Planning Board, we ask that you vote in favor of Article One. Thank you.
And Miriam, my apologies, but I think you did say at the beginning that you moved that the town meeting vote to adopt Article One as printed in the warrant?
Yes, did I not say that?
No, I think you did.
Oh, okay, I did.
No worries.
Thank you.
Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor?
As an introduction, the role of the advisory committee is to provide town meeting with recommendations and commentary for each warrant article. We try to include in our commentary an explanation of what the article seeks to accomplish, a description of the issue, our assessment, and our recommendation. For special town meetings, we also seek to highlight why the article is being brought forward through a special town meeting instead of the regular annual town meeting in May. Articles One and Two are zoning bylaw changes related to the MBTA Communities Act. These articles are being submitted through this special town meeting instead of the annual town meeting because of the compliance deadline on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The MBTA Act was enacted in January twenty twenty-one, requiring municipalities near MBTA transit locations to adopt a zoning bylaw that allows development of multifamily housing. Hanover is one of these required communities because we are adjacent to Hanson, which has a MBTA station. Multiple other municipalities have challenged the MBTA Act in various venues and for various reasons. The advisory committee previously recommended a wait-and-see approach while the other municipal challenges were pending to protect against potential negative ramifications. All outstanding challenges have now been resolved. The Supreme Judicial Court held that the MBTA Act is enforceable. The state can reduce financial support to municipalities which do not have an approved zoning bylaw by the deadline on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The state can also seek to appoint a special master to create its own zoning bylaw that can be significantly different from the current proposed bylaw in both location and restrictions. There is no viable path in which Hanover can avoid a zoning bylaw that allows multifamily development as required by the MBTA Act. Either a town meeting approves this proposed bylaw, or a special master will create one. If a special master creates the bylaw, Hanover faces serious risk of losing control over the location and restrictions for any development. Hanover would also face the risk of significant reductions to our state financial aid, whether grants, Chapter Seventy, Chapter Ninety, or other sources. Article Three seeks to appropriate two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to address these concerns. This could exacerbate our financial challenges, undermining the benefits of the recent override. Regardless of anyone's view on the MBTA Act, multifamily housing, development, or local control, there is no benefit to rejecting this proposed bylaw. If town meeting does not accept this article, we face the serious risk of both the state dictating a multifamily district without local control or oversight, as well as financial loss. We strongly recommend that town meeting accept this article.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Select Board supports the motion of the Planning Board and encourages special town meeting to adopt the MBTA-compliant zoning district at Hanover Crossing as proposed. We recognize that housing costs in the greater Boston area, including both rents and home prices, have far outpaced the means of many residents, and that the systemic changes are necessary to expand housing opportunities in Hanover and across the region. At the same time, we share the concerns expressed locally and statewide that the MBTA Communities Act is an, is an imperfect and overly uniform approach to addressing these challenges. Its implementation has created frustration and a sense that the state has not fully engaged with communities in a collaborative manner. However, with recent legal changes resolved in the state's favor and based on direct communications between Hanover officials and the Attorney General's Office, it is clear that the remaining out of compliance beyond January one, twenty twenty-six, would likely result in consequences detrimental to the town in both the near and long term. These may include significant legal costs, loss of revenue, and grants, and the appointment of a special master with authority to impose MBTA-compliant zoning on up to five separate and distinct parcels without local input or approval. Given these considerations, the Select Board believes it is in Hanover's best interest to adopt the MBTA-compliant zoning district as developed by the Planning Board. We encourage voters to vote yes on Articles One and Two.
That's it for prepared commentary. Any questions or comments under Article One? Please come to a microphone. Seeing none, this is a zoning bylaw change, but only requires a simple majority instead of the usual two-thirds because it deals with housing. That's a specific exception. All those in favor of the motion of the Planning Board will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The motion carries and achieves majority. Article Two, uh, sorry, jumped ahead one. Article Two, amend zoning bylaws under Section Ten, Purpose and Applicability. Ms. Bragnoli.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Miriam Bragnoli, two-two-six Latchmont Lane. The Planning Board moves that town meeting, I'm sorry, the Planning Board moves that town meeting not adopt Article Two as printed in the warrant.
No, no, sure?
Oh, oh, yes, sorry, sorry, sorry. I was so shocked at that, how quickly that vote took place that it just.
Would you like to rephrase, Ms. Bragnoli?
No, I expected a lot of discussion and, and, anyway. Again, the Planning Board moves that town meeting adopt Article Two as printed in the warrant, thank you. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, MGL, Chapter Forty A, Section Five of the Zoning Act, the Hanover Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, in person and by Zoom, in the second floor hearing room at Hanover Town Hall, five-five-zero Hanover Street, Hanover, Mass. zero-two-three-three-nine. This article simply adds a new subsection labeled N to subsection ten point zero twenty-zero of our zoning bylaw to accommodate the language of multifamily overlay district in accordance with the provisions, provisions of Section Six point seventeen point zero of our zoning bylaw.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Doctor.
This article is an accompanying article to Article One. It amends a different part of the zoning bylaws. We recommend that town meeting approve it.
Any commentary from the Select Board?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, thank you. There is no new commentary. The commentary is the same as in Article One.
Thank you. Questions or comments under Article Two? Seeing none, again, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion of the Planning Board will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Article Three, appropriate funds, legal and other related expenditures associated with challenges brought against the town of Hanover if special town meeting votes no on Article One for this special town meeting warrant, up to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars free cash.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town not accept this article and take no further action. This article was to appropriate funds to cover expenses if Article One was not accepted, but Article One was accepted, so this article is not necessary.
Any commentary from the Select Board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If Articles One and Two pass, this article is null and void, and the Select Board recommend not passing Article Three.
Questions or comments, Article Three? Seeing none, I'll remind everybody, this is our first negative motion. The advisory committee has moved that we not do this, so when you vote yes, you're agreeing with that motion. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee to not do this will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article Four, closeout of prior appropriations and rescind borrowing authorizations for general fund projects, water enterprise projects, and Community Preservation Act projects.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. Prior town meetings have approved funding for projects through either an appropriation of existing funds or an authorization to borrow funds. This article closes out unused portions of those projects. Any unused appropriation will be transferred into free cash. Any unused borrowing authorization will be rescinded. This article is being submitted at this special town meeting instead of annual town meeting to provide additional clarity for the annual budget process.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Moderator, the Select Board encourages special town meeting to vote yes on all of these project closeout items included in Article Four of this warrant, so that we can go into the meat of the budget season with all currently allocated monies towards completed CPC, general operating fund, and water enterprise, enterprise fund projects returned to free cash, retained earnings in the CPC general accounts, so that the funds can be used, whether in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six or in subsequent years, for the highest and best purposes. While from time to time, the town has taken on the task of closing these projects out and utilizing previously allocated funds towards more pressing needs, this Select Board, with the support of the Budget Director and Town Manager, has adopted a new set of policies so that the project closeout requests, requests like this one will be reviewed by the Select Board annually, with the anticipation that similar requests to this will be on future annual town meeting warrants every year.
Questions or comments under Article Four? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article Five, amend general bylaws to add section four dash two-seven, removal of elected officials. Mr. Dixon?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, Walter Dixon, one-twenty-one Hanover Street, Hanover. I am moving to withdraw Article Five, recall of elected officials, with the clear expectation shared by me as the sponsor, the Hanover Select Board, and Town Council, that we will work together over the coming months to procure a revised recall article with the goal of having a publicly available draft by April first, twenty twenty-six, for potential consideration at the May twenty twenty-six annual town meeting.
Uh, Mr. Dixon, there is, there is no motion to withdraw on that. You would move, it's essentially the same thing, it's just different words, that you move to, to pass over, you can either create a committee, or you can pass over and take no further action. It's effectively the same thing.
Okay.
But you move to pass over and take no further action. You'll take further action, as you said in your commentary, but you can't take action at one town meeting to actually technically cause action at another town meeting.
Right.
It's a Robert's Rules versus Town Meeting Time thing.
Okay.
So we'll go with the motion being to pass over and take no further action. Do you have any other further commentary, sir?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Doctor.
Mr. Moderator. The advisory committee supports the motion to pass over the article and take no further action. We have provided town meeting with written commentary that town meeting members can review as to the reasons why we support that motion at this time, but since we all agree on the same outcome, we'll stick with that.
Mr. Geary, does the bylaw review committee have commentary? Mr. Geary, does the bylaw review committee have commentary?
John Geary, two-forty-eight Mans Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the bylaw review committee. We support the motion.
Questions or comments under Article Five? I'll come here to the microphone.
Point of order, David Ladd, seven-eight-six Hanover Street. The bylaw review committee does not have any role of approving or recommending bylaws. Uh, their role as described under the bylaws is only to assist in the development of those bylaws and not to make recommendations either to the town meeting or to the Board of Selectmen.
Uh, I hear you, and I think they would agree with you. I think he had his whole prepared commentary, and then with the negative motion, Mr. Geary may have ad-libbed a bit, but we appreciate your comments. Other questions or comments under Article Five? Seeing none, as with the Article Three, this is a negative motion made by Mr. Dixon, the petitioner, to pass over and take no further action at this time. All those in favor of Mr. Dixon's motion will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Mr.?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
Make a motion to adjourn the special town.
To dissolve the town meeting?
Dissolve.
I have a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We're dissolved. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. It matters to take part in your government.